Okay, thank you. We've got some protocol to go through here. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the joint commissions, the Winward and the Leeward Planning Commissions of Hawaii Island, to order. The first order of business is going to be to choose a chairman for the proceedings. Do you have any thoughts on this, Kona?
Since I chaired the last joint commission, I would defer to you to chair this one, if you're okay with that.
Thank you, Keith. I'm okay with that, and I would ask you to serve as vice-chair and conduct the Kona side of the meetings. I think it would be beneficial to alternate the Kona discussion take place, the Hilo discussion take place, rather than going back and forth.
We can, as commissioners, then, if there's any questions, I'll start that discussion. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, that would be great. Also, I'd like to ask all the commissioners on both sides to, you know, there's a button, a red button in front of you. When you press that, your mic's on, and then you have to depress it again to turn the mic off. So when you're not talking, make sure the mic's off, because if there's overtalk, it can mess up the public record.
Okay, that's fine, and I'll go ahead and start, then.
Well, one more thing. Let's do an introduction of the people participating. The Winward Commissioners here are Thomas Raffapi, Miles Miosato, Donald Decada, Don Delacruz, Joseph Clarkson, and myself, Greg Henkel, his chair. And if you could go ahead and introduce your side and the staff, then you can go ahead and proceed with the public testimony.
Great. I have here Colin Kaholo, Nancy Carr Smith, Scott Church, Perry Kealoha, Barbara Nobriga, and Sunny Shimaoka as commissioners. Keith Unger, vice-chair. For representing the planning department, planners Christian Kaye and Shansi Watanabe. And we have Leeward Planning Commission Secretary Noriko Sauer. I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. On our side, the staff is Jeff Darrow, Maya Jackson, and Sarah Hata Finley. Thank you. You can go ahead from your side, Keith.
First, testifier, Mike Matsukawa.
My name is Mike Matsukawa. I live in Captain Cook, South Dakota. I only got my written testimony in this morning, but essentially, I'm speaking to Section 9-9, which is proposed to be amended by delegating a substantial amount of your authority to the planning director. My concern is, and I think Randy Batusek addressed this same issue, is that the legislature gave the commissions the authority to regulate and administer SMA. When you delegate authority to a director or another agency official, it's necessary because there's so much work: processing applications, generating correspondence, typing out agendas, preparing for hearings like this one. But when you do so, you need to make sure, and this is a requirement of general administrative law, that you have some measurable standard by which you know what you're allowing someone else to do for you, and what that person cannot do. And then some kind of reporting process so that you know the person is doing it correctly. And then some kind of review process. That would be the report. What is happening now is when you delegate under Rule 9-9, there's no standard. If you read what is being allowed, the last part of the sentence, "to administer, interpret, enforce the terms, scope, and condition set forth in special management area use permits." These are existing permits issued by the commission. So let's say something was issued in 2014. An issue comes up about what does the term or condition require? Well, if it's the planning commission's permit, then logically, the commission ought to be the one to make the final decision as to what it means, how it should be applied, et cetera. As written, 9-9 is a wholesale delegation to the planning director. You will never know what he or she does. There's no review process. There's no reporting process. And I think, just from a legal standpoint, I think it's deficient. From a political standpoint, it's also deficient, because you are giving away your authority and never hearing back on how it's used. A good example is on Maui. The Maui Planning Commission rule understands that these day-to-day things come up. What does permit condition number 12 mean? The Planning Commission rule on Maui says the planning director takes the information, makes an analysis, makes a recommendation, but ultimately reports to the Planning Commission. I don't know if it's on a quarterly basis or monthly basis. Comes to the commission, goes on their agenda. They look at the interpretation of condition 12. If it's okay, it's a routine approval. If it's not okay, they hold off action on it. And I think that's what's missing in this proposal. The idea is to alleviate the commission from many of the daily tasks that anyone runs into. You know, what does condition 8 mean? How many parking stalls did we intend to require? Where was the beach access supposed to be? Those kinds of conditions. Is a convenience store the same thing as a gas station? Those things come up on a daily basis. But then sometimes, some very important issues also come up on a routine basis, something that was never foreseen. So should you delegate that responsibility to someone to decide when it was your permit? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And you do bring up some excellent points, and you're correct. As planning commissioners, both on the Winward and Leeward side, you are correct. We have final authority on all SMA permitting activities, not just SMA major where we make the final decision. But you're right, that delegation process, which we're going to be talking more about today, is really an important process, and you're absolutely correct. There is no, there's no schedule, or there's no format where the planning department ever does get back to the commission. And so that definitely is something we're going to be addressing today. So thank you.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the Maui rule is a good template, but it's very brief. So if the commission wishes to proceed further and come up with a more detailed, you don't want to get like a federal agency and get a booklet full of rules and procedures. But I think if there's dialogue with the community, the developer, industry, property owners, public interest people, I think we could work out a manageable format where the delegation does relieve you of some tasks, but yet preserves your authority.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no questions. Thank you. Proceed.
You're good.
Yeah, I have to quickly review the SMA, and I just made some pointers on what it is. And it was the recreational resources that we're concerned with, historic resources, scenic and open space, coastal ecosystem, economic uses, coastal hazard, managing development, and marine resources. These are all important, and that's why they are special. The public opportunity in the SMA system is to review, they have you do an EA, environmental assessment, EIS, environmental impact statement, review the SMA permit, attend public hearing, and that's really important to us. Inquire with the planning staff about additional public participation, an opportunity unique to their respective county. And I feel that if we don't get the opportunity, this will affect us, because I have brought some photos here with your limit of 125,000, and now raising the limit to 500,000. And you want to say that permitting right now is bottleneck, and you want to speed it up is the reason? These folders will tell you we need to slow it down. The infrastructure, the resources, our water, everything is in disarray. From 2011, this has not been fixed. Kahalua Beach, for one, is the main tourist destination. There are 1,500 people per day going to the beach. It's 303D impaired. There's a cesspool from Queen Kalama to Kahalua Beach. Two million gallons per day goes into the ocean. And you want to add all, not fix. This is wrong. So we need input even on the smallest development going in the SMA. And if your limit is 500,000 trying to reach that, it should be lower. It should be lower than 125. Here's the pictures I wanted to show you.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Unger. We have a question from this side for Ms. McMichael.
Yes, since I was not able to see the photo that was shown to the Leeward Commissioners, could the testifier please describe briefly what's in the photo?
Okay.
Or could somebody from the staff hold it up to the video camera so we can see it?
Like the Kahalua shaft, for one thing. The water at Kahalua Beach is high in salinity, and the reason is because of the water pumps. And last year, I asked about the water pumps, and they said that there was two water pumps that broke, and they could not tell me how long. I asked them, like, one year, two years? They couldn't tell me. And the other two broke in November. But this year, they're telling us they broke this year. The salinity count proves here that it was broken many, many years ago. And it shows that in 1992, it started to climb, all the way to 2016. And it's the EPA maximum level is way below. They have risen so high. It's not been fixed. There's constant fecal matters at Kahalua Beach. Constantly, they're posting bacteria signs, and it says, "Swim at your own risk." I'm sorry, but my kids, my grandkids, we don't go to the beach anymore. And to put people in there snorkeling, and you have raw material going in there, it's pathetic. We have to fix it. I went to every department I could, pleading with them, to please put in a sewer. The houses on the beach, on the oceanfront, they don't have room for the septic tanks, so they'll never be fixed. We're willing to put in money to hook up to the sewer, but they're saying they don't have money. But yet, they have money to put into the rail in Honolulu. The TAT taxes alone are millions of dollars, and nothing's gone back to Kahalua Beach. It's the most used beach on this entire island for snorkeling. We have 75 public parking, 1,500 people per day.
Sorry, Ms. McMichael. This is Malia Hall, Corporation Counsel. I just, could you describe, is that what's actually in the photos? Are there pictures of broken pumps? That's what the commissioners' question is?
Everything. An explanation of each item.
Yeah, can you tell me what it actually, the picture, for the record, we need to know, like, what the picture is of. So is it of the pumps? Is it of the shoreline? Like, that kind of description, please? Thank you.
Yes. Okay, it shows the Kahalua shaft. There's a graph. There's a caution sign of the bacteria. There's a front page of the West Hawa'i today, and there is the closed sign beach. There's the pavilion falling apart into the ocean, and it's erosion. It's never been fixed. There's the sewer. Actually, the sewer is open. It's in the ocean. And if they let it go for days, just open, they're still assessable. Here's a barbequeer. It's been broke since 2011. There's the pavilion. One of these two. One is closed, completely enclosed, and due to erosion. And then there's all the historic rock walls. It's all falling apart. There's a mini-huni rock wall that's protection of the bay. It's not fixed. The next big storm, it's going to wipe out Kahalua Beach. And it shows that the public parking here, it's totally flooded. And there's parking here, parking illegally all along the Leei Drive of Kahalua. The signs is saying, "No parking." So there's no pedestrian walking space for anyone. And it's really dangerous, because when you walk with your boards, surfboards, anything with kids, you have to go in and out the car to duck them. It's very hazardous for everybody.
Great, thank you. So 100% of the pictures are of Kahalua Bay and Keahoe Kona. So thank you.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Clarkson? Okay, thank you. We're ready here.
Thank you. Please state your name and where you reside.
I'm Mark Van Purnas. I reside in North Kona at Makalai. I learned of this proceeding only yesterday. It's a very important procedure, and I would suggest that the minimal notice requirements be expanded upon in this case. You continue this hearing, and at press releases, they explain all the issues that are arising. I have seen the suggested recommendations of the planning director for the first time this morning. I'm not an ignorant person. The minimum requirements should be exceeded in this case. This is a naked power grab by the planning commission, excuse me, by the planning director, at the public's expense and at your expense, since you represent the public. Remember that. You represent the public, not developers or the government. Now, I have submitted written testimony after I read the newspaper article yesterday. I assume you have it. I give it to the staff to distribute, and thus, I will not repeat that. I'll ask you to read it. Having seen these suggested changes for the first time, and being an experienced attorney with development experience, I point out the following to you in the planning director's supplemental. For instance, the addition, expansion of no SMA except for 7,500 square feet development. You will see lots of applications for 7,489 square feet, then change orders after additional approval. There is no provision for if the initial application is expanded upon. There is no initial or any sort of enforcement or review process. So there will be, I guarantee you there will be that. I have never been associated with a development that does involve a change order on the shoreline. You are abdicating your authority for the public input. So too with Section 2. 499,000 will be the cost before contractor, ad hoc contractors of every shoreline development. Then there will be change orders. Again, I point out, I have never been associated with the shoreline development that involves change orders that up the price, sometimes doubling it. So this is just a methodology for the developer, or the homeowner, or whomever, to circumvent the SMA policy. Now, the planning department knows this. They're not stupid, and I don't think you should be taken for fools when this has no provision for enforcement or review when the limits are exceeded. I'm also concerned about the provision for the harbors and such. Shouldn't the public have the right to have some input on this? Why are you taking it away and giving it to a politically appointed person? Also, a great concern to me is the political appointee's ability to waive the shoreline management area shoreline survey. This is a naked land grab. We all know the shorelines change. We all know that setbacks are determined from the shoreline. So they will determine setbacks for their improvements based on outdated incorrect shoreline surveys. The improvements will be constructed. Then, if there was another shoreline survey, oh, we're too close to the water, but too bad. We got our approvals, and the public loses that part of the shoreline. Shoreline surveys and shoreline locations have been an issue, a public issue, for decades here in and near the islands. Why are you basically allowing developers to determine where their saywork of their improvements are going to be, and then thereafter, maybe they find out they're too close, they will be too close, so they have an old survey. But it's already done. So these proposed changes, I suggest, have been consciously written to defeat the public's input in shorelines, in shoreline development. And that you are being asked to approve them when there is no problem with the shoreline survey and shoreline improvement process as existing now. These should be rewritten to accommodate all of these things at a minimum.
Please, Mr. Van Purnas, if you could summarize your comments, please?
Yes, I'll conclude. The delays are at the planning department, not in the public hearing. Public hearings are an integral, an important right of the public. They should not be taken away and given to a political appointee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners on the Leeward side, Winward side? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Purnas. Randy Batusek?
Testify as an individual. I'm not representing the client, which is a nice change. And I, you know, just wanted to, you know, give some feedback to the planning commissions, because I've been involved SMA issues here on the Big Island for a long time. And I just feel that there's some things that could be done in order to make it more efficient and effective, and to actually accomplish what the legislature intended when it enacted the Chapter 205A. And, you know, just by way of background, you know, what's important here is generally, under the law, the zoning power of the county comes from the state legislature, in our case, under Hawaii Revised法, Chapter 46. And the legislature delegates zoning power to the county council, that then creates departments and assigns different responsibilities to those departments. The departments then create rules by which they administer the various aspects of land use control that are delegated to the counties by the legislature. Now, under the special management areas, it's an entirely different structure. The legislature in Chapter 205A delegated responsibility for managing the special management areas within the counties of Kauai, Maui, and Hawaii to the planning commissions. In other words, it's a direct delegation of legislative authority from the legislature to the planning commissions. And it bypassed the county council and the Hawaii County Code, and it's purely a matter of legislative authority passing from the state to the planning commission. And then, in that authority, the legislature empowered the planning commission to pass rules in order to govern the special management area, and said that under those rules, it has, the commission has the power to delegate some responsibility for administration to the planning department. And so what we're here today to do is look at how the commission is going to exercise the authority granted to it by the state legislature to administer the special management areas, and particularly, passing rules by which the special management areas are administered, and as a subset of that, delegating certain authority for administration to the planning department. And so what I wanted to start with, and what I started my written testimony with, is that before you can really look at expanding or modifying the authority, the responsibility that you delegate to the planning department, you should take a very careful look at how the department exercises the authority that you give it. And I'm not saying it's bad. I'm not saying they're doing things wrong, but I'm saying part of your responsibility is the commission, because you are ultimately responsible for the administration of Chapter 205A. And you can give some authority to the planning department, but you still have the responsibility. And so it's like any situation where you delegate, if you're an employer, you delegate responsibility to your employees. If you're a parent, you delegate responsibility to your kids. You want to make sure that they exercise the authority that you give them in a manner that you think is the right way to administer the rule or to perform that task. And I'm not saying they're wrong. I think I have some issues with some parts of it. But I think that before you continue to entrust them with your duty, you know, with your responsibility, you should take a careful look at how they perform the responsibilities you've given them in the past, and how they're going to perform the further responsibilities that you give them in the future. And that's sort of what Mr. Matsukawa was saying. It's the same kind of thing. But I just think that the commission has to say that, you know, as individuals, as individual commissioners, you are responsible for the administration of the special management areas. You have to feel, if you're doing it, that it's being done right, or if somebody else is doing it on your behalf, that it's done right. And, you know, I think that that's going to take some careful inquiry. So that's kind of my fundamental starting point, both retrospectively and prospectively. I see in the department's response to my comments, they say, "Yeah, Mr. Batusek makes some good points about how things were done in the past, but we're going to start doing things different now." And, you know, to me, you know, how you've done things in the past is a pretty good indicator of how you're going to do things in the future. And so I would look back and forward, you know. I would make sure, because looking back is going to help you design the kind of controls and feedback and information flow that's going to help you ensure that going forward, things are going to be done right. So that's my overall point. My second point is that, you know, the intent of the law, 205A, was to say that there are certain types of uses and activities that are covered by the law, and there are certain types that are not. In other words, the legislature said, "We're going to define, we're going to say permits, SMA permits, are required for all uses in the special management area. All development in the special management area requires a permit." Then they turn around and say, "We're going to define development." And they're going to say that development is defined in a certain way to include certain things. And then they're going to say there are also these areas that are exempt from the definition of development. And important ones include subdivision, you know, some public facilities, and then one I'm involved in a lot, which is single-family residences. And the Chapter 205A 22 defines development to exclude single-family residences. There's a catch-all phrase at the end of 22 to say that if the proposed use has substantial, significant environmental effects, that they can require a permit. And so... And so if you're a homeowner and you want to, you want to remodel your house, you're required to submit an SMA assessment under your rule 9-10, which says what you plan to do. And the department looks at that and decides whether or not you fit as an exemption. But what happens in reality is, you know, you, they require a number of different components to an assessment. It's very, very similar to an SMA application itself. You know, in other words, you have to submit an assessment to the department, says, here's what we're planning to do, here's what the impacts will be, and then the department decides whether or not it's exempt. Very often, they take a long time to decide whether or not it's exempt, even though you look at it, it's obvious it's a single-family residence, you know? You're talking about modifying, reconstructing a single-family residence, but you still have to do this extended form. You get it, you know, you get it sent back to you saying, well, this is deficient in five respects because of, you know, you don't have a shoreline survey because it looks like there's two lots instead of one. In other, in other words, what happens as a practical matter is, rather than looking at it and saying, yeah, it's a single-family residence, they look at it and say, well, no, you have to, your application is deficient because you haven't done this, you haven't done that, you haven't done that, send it back to you, you have to revise it, resubmit it 35 days later, oh, no, you haven't done this, you haven't done that, sometimes the same things because a new planner is doing it, sometimes different things. And, you know, you're, you end up 90, 120 days down the road before they even decide whether your proposed renovations to the single-family residence are exempt or not.
Please summarize, Mr. Batusek.
Sure. So to my main point, my main concern is that, is that the department, I'm sorry, that the commission remain involved in the process. In other words, that the commission hold hearings to evaluate how the law's been implemented, that the commission follow up on these issues, the commission not delegate authority without making sure that the authority is properly exercised, and that all appeals from decisions of the director relative to the official management areas come to the commission because right now they go to the Board of Appeals. And I think that that's one way of the commission keeping a good handle on whether the, you know, whether their, their department is actually exercising the discretion in a manner that's consistent with the law.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Janice Palma Glennie, please state your name and your area of residence.
My name is Janice Palma Glennie and I live in Keahoe, Hawaii.
Thank you.
This is a very critical issue, as you've heard, and I appreciate being able to testify very briefly about it. I'm asking planning commissioners to please allow more time and public input into this issue, which doesn't seem to be just about bringing our county into conformance with state law, but it also appears to restrict the county from making laws which are more appropriate as per the desire of this county's residents to protect their natural and cultural and societal assets. Any legislation or rule that limits, rather than increases, public input in this way should be avoided and in this case, denied or at minimum revisited and repaired to take that and other issues raised here today into consideration. I hope for your time and for consideration into not making a rash decision today.
Commissioners, any questions? Winward commissioners?
No questions, but Mr. Unger, do you have, you, you said three testifiers. Do you have more after this one?
Yes, the, I have one more. We have some late signups, so I have one more testifier.
Thank you.
Benjamin, and I may need some help with the last name, Gin. Thank you. Please state your name and your area of residence.
My name is Benjamin Cohen and I live in Kalakaua.
Thank you.
I'm in support of the public being included in the process of the shoreline planning commission events and what's going on in the process. And I just came to say that, pretty much. So hopefully the public stays included on the process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We have three people signed up to testify. We'll start with Corey Harden. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth in this matter before the planning commissions?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and proceed. You have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Susan Forbes. I live in Haukalau and I'm the president of the Haukalau Point Preservation Association. I appreciate that last month, or maybe the end of August, there was an informational briefing on coastal zone management done by the Office of State Planning, and that was very, very helpful. And as I was thinking about that, I went back to the objectives and policies within the law related to Hawaii's coastal zone management law, and there are two comments that I have. One related to managing development. The program is supposed to improve the development review process, communication, and public participation in the management of coastal zone resources and hazards. Changing the threshold for an SMA major permit actually reduces public participation. And I think we've heard that before in some of the other testimony. The other point here is related to economic uses. The program is to concentrate coastal zone dependent development inappropriately and enabling public input. SMA minor permits currently provide for neither. I'd like to point out that the county can be more restrictive toward development than required by state law. The Hawaii Supreme Court held that, with a few exceptions, local governments are free to become more protective of the coastal lands than the Coastal Man, Coastal Zone Management Act provides. In light of these environmental issues and the objectives of the coastal zone management law, the Haukalau Point Preservation Association opposes increasing the threshold for SMA major permits from 125,000 to 500,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any questions from the winward commissioners? Scott Wallace is next.
My name is Scott Wallace. I'm a resident of Haukalau, registered voter in Haukalau, and I speak today in opposition to amendments to rule nine. I have three, three reasons that I think you should look at why this should be opposed and not adopted. The first is a legal argument, and that is that the rule change was not properly or legally initiated. The rules are really clear in HRS 205A 22 that the rule changes must be initiated by a person and not the department. And in this case, this rule change was initiated by the planning director, Mr. Yi. This argument was made in a prior testimony and responded to in Mr. Yi's response. And I'll quote his response, saying, quote, "The commission may want to add a provision or rule to in the future to clearly state that the director may initiate amendments." So there's a very large legal issue here that the rule change was not properly initiated, and in fact, the rule change was initiated by the department head and not a person. This is important because procedure has to be followed correctly. We all know what happened in the TMT case with procedure not being followed correctly. What happens here is if this planning commission pushes forward these rule changes, the Board of Appeals will then hear the matter on appeal, and then if they go ahead and affirm the planning commission, it will simply wind up in circuit court. So you're back to a whole legal kerfuffle, so to speak, because the rules weren't being followed. And I would further state that the rules are for the benefit of the public and for the department. And if anybody should understand the rules, it should be the people writing the rules. But the rules in this case should be initiated by a member of the public and not the department. The second reason that I'd like to talk about why this rule change should not be adopted is based upon the fact that there is no legal precedence that the county of Hawaii has to follow state law when it comes to coastal resources. It's pretty clear, other testifiers have made that point, I don't think it's a debatable issue. I think the important thing that has to be looked at is why on the county of Hawaii do we need to keep this threshold at 125,000? I'm no stranger to SMA permit assessments, SMAs, and EAs. I've pulled those permits on every island in Hawaii through a movie theater business I was formerly associated with called Wallace Theaters on every island except Ni'ihau, which doesn't have any theaters. And in that case, I've had no issue in terms of the number of days it takes to get a permit. In fact, I, my experience with over 50 to 60 of these permits on the island of Oahu, that Hawaii County is one of the faster permitting authorities based upon the current rules, particularly compared to the county of Hawaii or Maui. But the reality here on the big island, when I look at all the projects, is that we don't have any infrastructure. We don't have any wide-scale sewage system, public sewage system. We have, of course, cesspools and septic tanks. In addition, we have a lot of catchment water on the big island that on the other islands they have county water. So all this infrastructure makes it that much more critical to look at planning and issues with respect to shoreline management because those affect, affect the coastal resources, affect the ocean, which you don't have on the other islands with a larger threshold. So it's important that we look at county of Hawaii being fundamentally different than Oahu or Maui in terms of needing that lower threshold. And finally, the third point is that these rule changes obviously reduce the transparency on development. Today, there's nobody speaking in favor of these rule changes except the department. I'm the sixth or seventh testifier today. There's nobody here supporting making these rule changes. What the public wants and what the public deserves is transparency, and the public also deserves input. And by rise, raising the amount from 125 to $500,000, you provide an opportunity for the public not to be heard on these kind of matters. So in conclusion, for these three reasons, I believe that these rule changes should not be adopted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Any questions from winward commissioners? Leeward? Is there anybody else signed up or that would like to testify publicly on either side? Then I would look for a motion to close the public testimony portion of this hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing. This is Keith Unger in Kona.
Are you ready to go and, Leeward?
Yes, we're ready here.
Okay. I understand you guys are going to have to move to a position where you can see the presentation. So we're not going to, you're not going to be visible to us up at your chairs during the presentation. And some of our people might want to move too to get a better view. So Jeff Darrow is going to do the presentation, and then we'll follow with questions, first from Leeward and then from winward to Maya or Jeff. So anytime you're ready, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Joint Planning Commission. I just want to give our appreciation for your, taking time out of your busy schedules to be able to join us this Monday morning and try to work and improve our rules for rule nine of the planning commission rules. Before I begin, I would like our corporation counsel to address the matter that was raised regarding the authority of initiating the rule change today. And if Malia could address that briefly, that would be good before I go on.
Hi, sorry, I just lost internet connection. I was looking up the, do you know what the county charter section? Anyways, she's going to find it for me, but the county charter section addresses the fact that the planning director has the authority to advise the commission. Thank you. Yeah, so under chapter seven, planning department, section 67.1, and then it's actually 67.2B1, the director shall be the chief planning officer of the county of the, and the administrative head of the department, and shall advise the mayor, the winward planning commission, the leeward planning commission, and the council on all planning and land use matters. And then if you look in the joint commission rules, it refers to the commission has the power to initiate rule-making proceedings. Thus, the planning director, in, in many aspects, is representing the commission in different levels. Therefore, he, he makes these recommendations because the planning department, as the head of the planning department, he is the one most of the time having to administer these rules as people come in for these permits. Therefore, I think the planning commission still, of course, has the ultimate authority. So if you guys want to motion now to, to take these rules under advisement and to look at these amendments here today, then we can move forward. But if you guys feel like it was, if you feel like you're, it wasn't properly initiated, then we'll have to look at that rule again and then re-initiate the proceedings. But again, it falls under your authority to initiate the proceedings. As we are within the proceeding now, you can choose to continue.
Thank you, corp counsel. Is there any discussion on that from this side, from the winward? Commissioner Akada?
I, I do like to revisit the section because as a planning commissioner, I have a hard time giving up my authority. And so I would like to give a little more clarification.
Clarification on, on what? Sorry.
Our authority and so forth, like you had just mentioned it, we have the final authority. And it seems kind of, from what I gathered, reading the, the rule changes and so forth, I, I have, I'm getting a mixed message, like, and so I kind of agree with the public, what they're saying about the commissioners giving up the authority.
Okay, do you mean just the authority initiating the proceeding or the authority that's addressed actually in the rule amendment?
In the amendment.
Presentation will address that, but I guess as just a brief overview of it, the amendment I believe you're speaking of is actually just a clarification of, of powers the planning director already has. And, and they run into these questions and such from other people. I'm sorry. That question his authority. So this is just kind of re-explaining it, but it actually is, if you read the rule, all, like, the assessment and that kind of stuff is all within the rule already. I think the only addition is the interpret portion. But the planning director must have the power to interpret in order to give you guys a recommendation. And then you guys still have the ultimate authority at, at the end of the day. And that's also why it, it comes back to you at the end, like, that's why I think that we wanted to initiate the, the appeal process that would actually come to you guys as well so that you guys would see that. Does that answer your question?
Not quite.
I think they'll go through it more in depth. I'm just giving you the very broad, but they'll go through each one, so like each component of it, so like the estimate, assessment portion and all that kind of stuff. So if you'd like to wait and hear their presentation, then they'll be much more thorough than I was just now, sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clarkson?
Yes, to remove any doubt about the procedural capability or legality of this meeting, I would like to move that the joint planning commission take up the issue of revisions to our rules, particularly rule nine, and call for a vote on that matter before, by the joint commission.
So there's a motion on the table? Would you restate it, please? Restate the motion.
That the joint winward and planning commission take up the issue of considering, considering amendments to our rules.
Now, I apologize, this is, it's, this is new territory for us here, and I, I see that the Leeward commission is, are not up at their microphones and I, they should be...
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're going to have them move back up to, to their seats while we have this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Just give us two minutes, please.
And then, once the Leeward commissioners are up there, we'll be looking for a second to that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Henkel, this is Keith. Before we get into a motion, can I just try to clarify what we're doing?
Yes, go ahead.
Apparently, the planning director has initiated rule changes, and that's what we're reviewing today. Basically, these have come from the planning director. So the issue is, does the, does the planning director have the authority to initiate rule changes under our rules? And so a question to corporate counsel spec- And so a question to corporate counsel specifically is, if you're looking at rules of practice and procedures, County of Hawaii Planning Commission, and when they say a person can initiate changes to the rules, the definition here of a person means any individual, partnership, firm, association, trust, state, corporation, or other legal entity of any character other than an agency. So I'm just wondering, I guess we're going to the legal question here. The planning department is an agency, these recommendations are coming from the planning director, therefore, is this a person under this definition?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Unger. Mr. Clarkson?
Hence the reason for my motion to obviate all of the confusion about whether this commission can consider these rule changes upon the initiation of the director. I am proposing that the council initiate consideration of the rule change, I mean, the commissions, the joint commission, initiate consideration of these rule changes. And I humbly ask for a second.
Do you understand the motion, Leeward commission?
I did not. It's Commissioner Shimaoka.
So Rule Two, sorry, this is Malia Hall. Rule 2.1 says a joint commission may at any time initiate proceedings for the adoption, amendment, or repeal of any rule of the commissions and procedures to be followed in rulemaking shall be set forth in these rules. Therefore, Commissioner Clarkson is saying, rather than get into the legal argument of is the director a person, as stated in these rules or not, the planning commission can use their authority to now initiate these amendments, not saying that you guys are going to approve all of them. You still have the authority to approve or not approve certain amendments. We will go through each one. So this is not a motion to approve anything. This is just a motion to initiate and consider these amendments as put before you by the planning department.
Mr. Darrell, the planner, has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also for clarification, the matter was agendized as review and action of the proposed amendments to Planning Commission rule. It wasn't agendized as a planning director initiated rule change. The only, when the background and recommendation came out, that had as a title, planning director initiated. That's normally how we present these rule changes to the commission. That process may need to change and be clearer, but as far as this process being agendized, it was agendized correctly.
Thank you.
So it's like there's a slight conflict in these terms. One, we have a person, any person can initiate a rule change, and it's very specific that an agency cannot initiate a rule change. And then additionally, that was just pointed out, the commission can initiate a rule change at any time, regardless of the source. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Then we...
Hence my motion.
You still have a motion on the table?
Can you repeat the motion?
I move that the joint commission consider changes to Rule Nine.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that the joint commission consider changes to Rule Nine. Let's go first with Leeward, and then when, if you guys have no more questions or comments, then we'll, then windward will take over.
I would like to proceed. I mean, we're here, and I'd at least like to hear the presentation from the planning department, whether we make a ruling or not. Perhaps we could revisit that, a final ruling to make actual changes. That could be another point of discussion, but I'd at least like to hear the planning commission's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Unger? Could I make a comment, please, Chair Henkel? Nancy Carsmith?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I understand, I don't understand, but I understand that this was agendized correctly, and at the same time, the document that we have in front of us that is the background and recommendation, it does state in the first paragraph, the planning director is initiating the amendments, da-da-da-da-da. I don't quite understand what the difference is between this and when we reviewed amendments to the PUD rules recently or earlier this year. Can anyone explain that to me?
There really isn't a difference. It's just, that's just, I mean, our normal way of doing things is having the planning director initiate. I think that's historically how it's been done in the planning department, but now it's just become an issue of the wording. So that's the motions on the table, just to make sure it's clear. But yes, in the past, that's how it's been done. The planning director has initiated the rule changes with the PUD as well.
Okay, thank you. I support the motion. I just wasn't clear about the conflicting language. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Church. I, it's such a fine line, the definition of a person. If the director had simply forwarded this as advice and counsel to the planning commission, then of course that effect, we wouldn't have this issue to contend with. I remain concerned by people who would object to whatever it is that we decide to do on the basis of fine-line procedure. So I'm supportive of the motion, would like to go through the arguments for the proposal with regard to advice and counsel from the planning director, so to speak, but I do remain somewhat concerned procedurally.
Any other comments? None from windward? None from Leeward? Then, at this point, we have to deal with this motion, and there, we could act on it. It could be withdrawn, or we could table it until after the presentation, which I think is what Vice Chair Unger possibly suggested, but we need to act on it somehow, so if it's...
The motion on the floor is just to consider, so you may as well...
This is Commissioner Shimaoka. I agree with Vice Chair Unger that maybe what we should do is listen to the presentation by the planning department. I mean, they went to the trouble of preparing it, and then we can make a better assessment after we listen to the presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Clarkson, you have a comment?
Yes, I would just like to make clear that my motion was only to remove the consideration of who initiated our consideration today by clearly asking the joint commission to initiate it via approval of my motion. My motion is not substantive in any way in our consideration of these proposed amendments, but merely to remove any shadow of impropriety over how we convened this meeting to review these proposed changes. Thank you.
Then I would ask for action on the motion, starting with Leeward. Would you do a roll call vote? I'm sorry, Maya has a comment?
Chair Henkel, I can take the voice vote for both commissions.
Okay, Maya Jackson will be taking the voice vote here.
Okay. Commissioner Clarkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miyasato?
Aye.
Commissioner De La Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ikeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rafapi?
Aye.
Commissioner Carsmith?
Aye.
Commissioner Church?
Aye.
Commissioner Koholo?
Aye.
Commissioner Ke'aloa?
Aye.
Commissioner Nobrega?
Aye.
And Commissioner Shimaoka?
Aye.
And Commissioner Unger?
Aye.
And Chair Henkel?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I just want to say thank you for your patience. This is a test case to see if we can actually be able to do this joint commission in the different council chambers. So thank you for your patience as we try to resolve the issues. We're learning of a number of issues that we're going to have to try to address, one of them obviously being the PowerPoint, as well as being able to effectively get communication back and forth of submittals that come in on the different sides. So as we go through this process, we'll see if this works, or if we're going to have to just meet together in one location. Thank you. They're good? Okay. I'll begin the presentation again. This is review and action of our proposed amendments to Planning Commission Rule Nine regarding the special management area. The proposed amendments to Planning Commission Rule Nine include changes made by Act 153, which amended Chapter 176 and Chapter 205A in the Hawaii statutes regarding the special management area. The proposed amendments to Rule Nine relating to Act 153 seek to, number one, exempt the State Department of Boating and Ocean Recreational from any SMA permit; number two, to amend the definition of single-family dwelling as an exempt class of action; and number three, increase the valuation of improvements that could be considered for an SMA minor permit versus requiring an SMA use permit. Additional changes we'll be looking at that are proposed to Rule Nine include the following: addition, added language for retroactive approvals and determinations; add clarification to the authority section; amend the SMA assessment section to include a filing fee for the SMA assessment application; a standard review and acceptance time, as well as add additional time to act on the assessment application, and amend the short-form assessment application section. Lastly, there is a proposal to amend the SMA use permit section that currently, including the assessment section, that currently allows the planning director to waive the submittal of a shoreline survey for a SMA use permit application and assessment application when the parcel abuts the shoreline. In preparation of the rules, there are times that we miss a particular section that we're trying to amend. Normally, there are several areas in a section in the rule that we try to amend at the same time. One of the sections that we missed through this was under the assessment application regarding this waiver. It would be the identical language that we're requesting in the SMA use permit section, and we'll address that as we get to it. The proposed amendments to Planning Commission Rule Nine resulting from changes made by Act 153, which amended Chapter 205A, 22 HRS, by defining that development does not include the following: construction or reconstruction of a single-family residence that is less than 7,500 square feet of floor area and is part of a larger development. Prior to Act 153, the, this definition that did not include development for a single-family dwelling was, did not include that floor area of 7,500 square feet. So any development, any single-family dwelling, no matter how large, would be exempt. Okay, the state law or Act 153 changed that to put a threshold. This language is being added or proposed for Rule 9-42A, which is the definitions. Prior to this amendment, as mentioned, all single-family dwellings, no matter how large, were considered exempt and would not require an SMA permit. The proposed amendments to Planning Commission Rule resulting from changes made to Act 153 continued, also, this amendment places a floor area restriction, as we mentioned, less than 7,500 square feet. The amendment is silent regarding the definition of floor area. And so the planning department has provided the commission a clarifying definition to Rule 9-42A, which is as follows: floor area shall be the total area of all floors of a building associated with the single-family residence, including a basement and accessory structures measured along the exterior walls of such buildings. The floor area of a building, or buildings, or portion thereof not provided with surrounding exterior walls shall be the usable area under the horizontal projection of the floor or roof, I'm sorry, the roof or floor above. If I could interject right here, I wanted to mention that as we're going through the slides, rather than wait till the end of the presentation and then have to go on back, if there are questions, if, it might be a good time to pose those questions while we have the language up on the board at that time. To the planning division, and so this was something that is new to us. Unfortunately, the people that I needed to speak with were not present this, prior to this hearing, that I could get a response. We can look at that, but this has been, we have been using this definition and applying it accordingly over the past several years, because we have been operating under the state law, and we, it's, it's been proven correct as we've been assessing our applications.
I don't have any big disagreement with that definition of floor area, but it would be nice if they were, it was congruent with other departments.
Any other questions from windward? Okay, I'll throw it over to Leeward.
This is Nancy Carsmith on this side. I just had a quick question, just wanted to confirm. So all front porches, balconies, lanais, anything covered or uncovered without surrounding walls are not included in square footage? Is that correct?
That's, if you had a lanai that was covered, and it was a large lanai, that would be considered, we would look at the floor area of that lanai as part of that. That would be in the second portion of this definition that says, the floor area of a building or portion thereof not provided with surrounding exterior walls shall be the usable area under the horizontal projection of the roof or floor area. So normally, the usable area would be a lanai. It would not usually involve the roof overhangs.
Any other questions from Leeward?
This is Commissioner Church again. I found interesting the point that was made in testimony about change orders and their effect on square footages. And I wondered, I'm not even sure if it's to prove to the planning department, to police that those change orders go through the building department, and, but I wondered if indirectly somehow that can be incorporated, or is just left silent?
The, if, any type of change order that would go through an amendment to a building permit would come through our office, and at that point, we would be reviewing that as part of the original request. There's, to be honest with you, we haven't, there was a testifier that mentioned that There's, to be honest with you, we haven't, there was a testifier that mentioned that people were going to come in with a dwelling that was 7,499 square feet. We haven't had too many submittals since this law was changed that are that close that we've had an issue. There was one that I recall, but other than that, I don't recall any. And because that was such an issue with that one particular application, the staff, as well as the Planning Division, is fully aware of that fine line regarding that. But as far as anything within this amendment, I don't think we have anything specifically to address that.
Any other comments from Leeward?
No, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Continuing on, additionally, Act 153 amended the definition of special management area minor permit and special management area use permit in Chapter 205A, 22 HRS as follows: "Special management area minor permit means an action by the authority authorizing the development, the valuation of which is not in excess of 500,000 and which has no substantial adverse environmental or ecological effect, taking into account potential cumulative effects." SMA minor permits are permits issued administratively by the Planning Department. No public hearing is necessary. Special management area use permit means an action by the authority authorizing the development, the valuation of which exceeds 500,000 or which may have a substantial adverse environmental or ecological effect, taking into account potential cumulative effects. An SMA use permit are issued, they are issued by the planning commissions and require public hearings. There are a total of seven references in Rule 9, changing the monetary reference from 125,000 to 500,000. These are listed as Rule 9-4, subsection Q and R, under the definition section; Rule 9-10, A, D, E, and F, which is under the assessment section; and Rule 9-11B, which is under the use permit, SMA use permit procedure section. Continuing on, additionally, Act 153 amended Chapter 171-6 Hawaii revised statutes regarding powers of the State Board and land and natural resources, which states that the Board may, notwithstanding Part 2 of Chapter 205A, to the contrary, plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain any lands or facilities under the jurisdiction of the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation of the Department without the need to obtain a special management area minor permit or special management area use permit. This provision basically exempts the State Department of Boating and Ocean Recreation from having to obtain an SMA permit for the construction, maintenance, and operation of any facilities under its jurisdiction. Based on the change in the state law, the following amendment is being introduced under the definition of what development does not include, under Rule 9-42, and then we're including R, and it states, "To plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain any lands or facilities under the jurisdiction of the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation of the State Department of Land and Natural Resources." And again, to clarify, this is being added under our definition section of what development does not include, which would not require a permit. Prior to this amendment, the jurisdiction for harbors was under the Department of Transportation, and they were exempt from this requiring SMA permits. When the jurisdiction transferred, the exemption did not transfer, so the legislature provided this rule change for that exemption.
Any questions on this portion? Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, these are the additional changes proposed to Planning Commission Rule 9, separate from those changes proposed by Act 153. These changes are being brought to the commission's attention because as the planning director and the planning department work through the process of dealing with SMA minor permits and assessments, there are certain things that we see that may need to be addressed as far as rule changes. Also to bring to your attention, these are minor changes that we're looking at currently since we were bringing this change before the commission in reference to the state law change. We are actively and have been actively working for a period of time on a major rule change for Rule 9, and we will be providing to both the joint commission, Winward and Leeward, once we finalize the major rule change. So we'll continue on. Currently, Rule 9-8C, permit required for development, this is retroactive language, and this is a direct result of the situation that just has occurred with the state law changing and the county rule not changing to line up with that state law and that transition time. So this will kind of give a buffer for the department to be able to work under the state law change until the rules are amended to reflect that. There's been some good input regarding this, and we are taking that into consideration. One of the suggestions is that rather than trying to change our rules every time the state law changes, is to be able to come up with language that our rule directly reflects the state law, so that our rule would just reflect that without needing to change our rule. That's something we're going to be considering in the overall change, so that we can do it across the board for Rule 9. But in this particular, since we were bringing this amendment and it was in response to this, we thought we would address this at this time. This change states the following: "Special management area minor use or emergency permits or exemptions validly issued by the department or the commission subsequent to any amendment to Chapter 205A Hawaii revised statutes but preceding any supportive amendment to this rule, Rule 9, shall continue to be considered valid." Okay, the, what this provision does is it allows for retroactive approvals or determinations that have been made by the department based on the changes to Chapter 205A of the Hawaii revised statutes as amended during the interim periods when the Planning Commission Rule 9 has not been updated and amended to reflect the change in the state law. This provision will allow the previous SMA minor permits that have been issued by the department based on the current state law to remain as valid permits.
Any questions from Leeward so far?
Some confusion about this. It seems to say that permits issued, but not according to the commission rules, permits issued by the commission or the department, subject to, subsequent to the change in a state law, but in contravention of our actual rules, will be valid until we change the rules, but there's no number limit, time limit, procedural limit. If we never change the rules ever, they would all still be considered valid. And I, I also have a personal problem with authorizing the retroactive approval. I know the procedural issues that are going to come up, but I still have a personal problem authorizing the retroactive approval of dozens, if not hundreds, of permits that I have no idea what's in them or anything about them. Now, that may be the case with future permits, but at least in the future, I have the opportunity to investigate them as they come up, when they come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a question. Are we going to be acting on the individual portions of this or...
Correct.
Okay. Please proceed then.
Just to bring clarification to this particular rule change, since Act 153 was initiated and approved in 2011, there was an attempt by the department and the commission to change the rules. Unfortunately, it did not change. There was, the Planning Commission deferred the action, and the planning department has been working on the major rule change to be able to bring that. There's been, it hasn't been an easy process. There's a lot of difficult issues to be able to define as we go through the rule change. We did not have any of the permits be appealed until recently, and that's when this issue came to a forefront. All those previous SMA minor permits that were approved, were approved with no problems. There wasn't an appeal or anything. So this recent appeal that happened, it was brought to our attention from our Corporation Council regarding this conflict in the rule. As a result of that, our director rescinded that minor permit and has been acting accordingly in regards to the 125 limit until we change the rule at this time. I do not believe it is the intention of the planning director or the department to not effectively line up with state law as soon as possible. What we're trying to do here is, in this change, make it known that even if state law changes and our rule doesn't change, we still can operate under that change until we line up our rule through this amendment.